All right, welcome to the continuation of the December 4, 2017, 6:30 PM special meeting of the Avon Board of Education. We are going to have budget presentation today regarding Pine Grove, Roaring Brook, Thompson Brook, Avon Middle School, the athletics budget, and the technology budget. However, before we get started, although I assume I know the answer, does any member of the public want to make comments before we start? There's a spot reserved for comments at the end. All right, excellent, thank you. So, who is speaking for Pine Grove? All right.
Jess. Good evening, everyone. So, we've been asked this evening to walk through each of our school's budgets and help bring them alive for you as best we can. So, in terms of Pine Grove School, the budget process is really driven by our school's desire for continued excellence. Our mission really is to create a safe and comfortable school experience for our students, to see our students achieve at a high level, and to work in partnership with parents and families to make all that happen. So, what does our budget include and how do we do that? The first piece, of course, is people. That staff that's listed in our budget keeps class sizes appropriate, offers a full complement of support services, and helps also to grow well-rounded individuals who can not only read and write, but are also learning unified arts and other languages. This year alone, just a couple of achievements from Pine Grove staff. One is they're implementing all new science units. So, that's work that they've been heavily involved in writing units from kind of the ground up. It's really been an exciting time for us in terms of that curriculum. The science curriculum in and of itself was several years old. A lot of the standards were pretty outdated. Even a lot of the practices were not really current with how we teach science today, really more of an inquiry model. And so, those new units are really being piloted, and I say that simply because it's the teacher's first round through. And I think it's important to know how much curriculum work our teachers have done the last few years in terms of writing all new language arts, math, social studies curriculum, and now onto science. The big difference really, I think, is that we're teaching children to think like scientists. You know, it's not so much about the answer, like maybe we experienced, but it's more about the process of getting to the answer. And that's a little scary for teachers because we're used to having answers and starting each lesson knowing exactly what the student should know at the end. And a lot of the inquiry teaching, that process, is a lot more about kind of bringing them along on the journey and seeing where it will end. So, that's been an exciting time for us. Another thing that the staff is excited about this year is our service learning projects. So, we've identified as a school through our Safe School Climate Committee the desire to really have our students involved in philanthropy, if you will, you know, how do you give back to others? And one of the things we did a lot of in the past was charitable collections. We might have done a canned food drive, a clothing drive, if you will. But that committee really worked us last year to come up with projects that students could do at every grade level that would really get them involved, giving back themselves. So, not so much about bringing in a can, if you will, but how do you go and how do you do for others? We've got some great ones. Kindergarten is doing a something for DCF where they're finding out about families in local communities that are in need, and the kindergarteners are literally putting care packages together for them. We have second graders that are going to be going out to some of the town offices, like the fire department and the police department, to kind of find out about how those community agencies help our community, and then they're going to do something to thank those agencies. And our third graders are looking at taking some of their curriculum projects, like their wax museum, out to local nursing homes to perform for seniors, people who are kind of stuck in those situations. And that's their way of kind of that hands-on giving back. So, some of the things you'll see in our budget are extra funding for resources, enrichment activities, things, student activities funding, you'll see that in there. And a lot of that money goes directly to those kinds of initiatives. So, how does the next year's budget impact us? So, first off, the staffing helps us continue to have appropriate class sizes, continue to offer the programs that we're offering now. The really exciting things, the two changes, one is the switch from a math coach to an enrichment coach. We've had a lot of success with that position over the last four years. When I started as a principal, it's been quite a while since the teachers had had any real thorough math P D. And bringing in a math coach was really an opportunity to mirror some of the work that we've done with our language arts consultants in the elementary schools. And that person really worked hand-in-hand with our teachers, getting them used to teaching math in a small group setting. That's very different from what a lot of teachers are used to in terms of delivering that math instruction. And I think we've accomplished that. I think it's been a good use of that position, and I'm definitely excited to see what that enrichment coach type position can do in our elementary schools. I think we've identified, you know, as a district, that that's an area for growth for us. And I think it'll be helpful to have that person there to work hand-in-hand with teachers. Sometimes it just doesn't come natural. I mean, our teachers are good at a lot of things, but just like principals, they're not good at everything. And so, sometimes having somebody there to be a critical friend and help you find resources and materials and things that you might need can really get the better of your life. The second thing you'll see in there is the STEM teacher. I'm going to just take a moment to talk about that. Last year, we had a reduction of a librarian at the elementary, the K-4 level. Roaring Brook and Pine Grove have been sharing that position this year. But it's also given us an opportunity to kind of step back and think a little bit about how we could best staff and what kinds of things we could offer our students in terms of that library time. How many of you have visited a local library recently, but they look very different than the libraries did, you know, even a decade ago? It was really an effort to make them more of like a learning common space where, you know, people go to not just read a book, although there's certainly nothing wrong with that, but also kind of get their hands dirty, if you will, you know, with hands-on stations, maker stations, maker spaces, they call them, where students are building with Legos and they're building with blocks, and there's computers, and really a mix of not only research and literacy, but also some of that hands-on STEM work, if you will. I think it's an area where Avon, dare I say, is maybe a little behind the curve. So, I think that it's a great step forward with us to kind of blend that library position with that STEM position. And we haven't worked out all the details yet, but I think in terms of all the work that's taken place in science curriculum writing this past year, and some of those new units are in place, having a teacher specifically dedicated to that work in the area of STEM, and if you're not familiar with science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, so someone who can really focus on that work, and kind of going back to what we talked about with science, you know, how do scientists think? How do you take something from nothing and build it, you know, into something? That's a lot of what STEM instruction is focused on. So, we're certainly, you know, excited to see, you know, what that position will bring and how it will offer a nice complement to our library and media specialist position. And let's see, last but not least, there's some additional funding in there in terms of enrichment, and I think that goes to complement that new position that we have and what kinds of suggestions that person might bring in in terms of how we can modify our instruction to meet the needs of all of our students.
In an effort to keep ourselves current and relevant, why don't we see if any board member has any questions directed specifically to your presentation? And that way, we will remember it better as we ask the questions.
So, taking a look at the budget, and I think one of the things you seem to have answered from the library and media specialists, we see a decrease. It looks like a further decrease, but it sounds as if you're talking about the STEM increase to be a complement. And I'm curious, and I think others probably would be, to understand if that means there'd be more times that they'd have a special, because I know that was one of the concerns with parents and board members, certain board members, that, you know, that the students were staying too long in a single classroom, and we know that all of us need breaks, and movement is very helpful, so.
Sure. Yeah, great question. So, I think we'd see it in complement in the sense that, and again, we haven't got the exact specifics yet, but Week A, I would have the librarian at Pine Grove, and Roaring Brook would have the STEM teacher. And then, Week B, that would flip-flop. And they'd actually share the space. You know, again, going back to kind of modern libraries today and what they look like, sound like and feel like, you know, same thing with Tripp to Barnes and Noble, right? I mean, you know, the bookstore looks different than it did many years ago. So, it would be in that space, the classes would take place there, would help with routines and transitions, and it wouldn't add necessarily to the time the students are in specials.
Okay, all right. And then, I was curious, the certified salaries decrease quite a bit, so I didn't know for you, just for yours, if for Pine Grove, was that taken into account retirements? Is that what that's doing? Because otherwise, with no enrollment change, you're really staying pretty steady. I didn't understand why it was significantly decreased.
So, I should just probably address this for the full board.
Why don't you bring it in a little closer, because we can't quite hear you.
Last year, if you recall, we went two rounds of the, we're going to call it the reduction scenario, to make the 1718 budget occur. The problem was is that it was passed late in April, and I had already rolled the budget to start getting things ready for P O's and things of that nature. And then, we always make adjustments to budget once it's passed by referendum. So, that large decrease, which I brought actually tonight just to make sure that everybody is still on the same page, we were looking to decrease over a million dollars, is still in one line item in that general budget, and it wasn't flowing through all the other line items. So, just so you're aware, you're going to see some, I'm going to call it bizarre decreases and increases this year because that particular journal entry was done after the budget was rolled for 1718. That sort of makes sense.
Was that the TBD line?
It was the TBD, Certified Salaries line.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So, the 1819 budget number that we're seeing is similar to what we're experiencing this year for the certified salaries?
Yeah, it is, right, correct. We did not make adjustments to certified salaries, other than the ones that you are shown on that page.
And then, the only other question that I had, because I think that probably answers psychologist increase, would that, okay, all right. So, then, the only other question I had is just because my eyes on the supplies. I know you mentioned some reason for supply increases, but all told, there were a lot of supply increases, and I'm curious why.
Sure. Well, some of that has to do with getting resources and materials that maybe we didn't get in previous years, so we tend to...
Don't say that to me. Guys have a good tour, lots of supplies, and we've said pre-buy and do stuff, so really, that's a hard...
Sure, sure.
Please don't. We haven't cut supplies.
Well, I guess as we grow our programs, there's always the need for additional resources and materials.
Oh, good saying.
So, we need some additional resources and materials for our new programs.
All right, I will let that go. For now.
All right, sure.
So, realizing that the enrichment teacher is actually going to be shared by three buildings, can you just explain a little bit of what that looks like? Do they actually come into individual classrooms, co-teach? Can you just explain how you'll utilize that position?
Sure. You know, if it's similar to how we've used the math coach, it would be a little all of those, that person maintaining their own schedule, and some of that was professional development time, co-teaching time, modeling lessons, so all of the above. I don't envision it, at least at this point, where it would be a set time in each building, kind of going where the need arises. Some of that's attending the common planning time for the teams and talking about the curriculum and where to make those adjustments. It might be attending staff meetings in our various buildings and presenting, or just teachers signing up, "I'd like you to come in and model a lesson." And where that's really helpful is if we're a team of four teachers, and I have the person come in and model a lesson for me, then I take that learning and I take that experience and I share it out with my team. Mr. Anquitz may have a different lesson or activity modeled in his room, and then how do we continue to, you know, share and collaborate in that manner?
So, you spoke to the math tutor. Is this meant to cover multiple subjects? Is that why we're calling it enrichment now? So, it's like English, or language arts, as well as science?
Sure. Yeah, you can offer, I mean, any subject or content area could be enriched. So, hypothetically, this person should have an even farther-reaching influence because it's someone that not only a classroom teacher could utilize, but an art teacher, a wellness teacher, a Spanish teacher could all utilize that person as a resource.
Great, thank you. I just wanted some clarity on that. And I have one last question.
Sure, go ahead.
And I will access everybody tonight, so I just, I want to give you an opportunity to reflect on if there's something you would like to see in this budget that isn't here. Is there something that you feel is missing that you would benefit critically from, that we should seriously give some consideration to putting back in perhaps?
The only thing that I would say is we've really enjoyed the teaching assistance the last couple of years at the elementary level. I think that position, especially in kindergarten through second grade with our youngest students, and, you know, I know there was various things that, you know, funded those positions that came from state grants and so on and so forth, but those positions have been invaluable to us. You know, you usually get a young certified teacher who's, you know, hungry to get involved and get themselves some experience, and, you know, we've gotten a lot of great small group instruction out of that time. We've gotten a lot of, you know, ability to bring our numbers way down in a lesson, just add that teaching assistant into a classroom, and your numbers instantly for that half an hour, forty-five minutes go from, you know, twenty to one to ten to one. So, that would be a position.
So, not having the teacher assistants, does that mean that your classroom times now are twenty to one all the time?
Not necessarily, because we utilize our tutors as push-in support, and we also have special education teachers who are full-time co-teaching and are educators, so, no. But that, the teaching assistants certainly gave us a greater ability to do that, you know, on a more ongoing basis, you know, Monday through Friday for all teachers.
Anything else you'd like to?
I want to add one more thing to Kathy. So, I didn't have it all in front of me, but just in thinking, I believe some of the increase you're seeing is some with the addition of Words Their Way, that program in grades three and four. So, much like when we added foundations a few years ago, that program in itself comes with consumables and resources for students, so, and some of those are just expensive materials.
Much better.
Thank you. I didn't have enough coffee this afternoon.
Further questions? Mr. Burke.
Just want to say, Jess, I love this program, it's the Service Learning Project.
Why don't you speak into the mic a little bit?
Sorry. Is this on?
Yes.
So, Jess, I just want to say, I love the projects, the service learning projects. I think that's fantastic. And also, I have to say, the Maker Space, I take my daughter to elaborate all the time, is fantastic, so, no, I think it's going to be a hit. I did see that you decreased your sections for second grade this time around, the infamous second grade, from seven sections to six. I also saw that there was a decrease in total number of students for third grade, and I'm just, you know, for folks that will have to grapple with uncertainties with intergovernmental revenues coming up, what would it be like if there was six sections of third graders?
Sure. So, I think you're referring to the fact that that's the cohort, right, moving up? So, when you see those decreases, you're, it's followed up, right? So, third goes to fourth, second goes to third, I mean...
So, yep, so, it looks like second grade last year was 126 students. Second grade this upcoming fiscal year is 108.
Right, because that would be the first graders moving from first grade to second grade.
Exactly, yep.
So, well, I mean, whenever, in those numbers, for example, what you see under 1718, I can tell you, this week alone, we had three new first graders register, so you see 108 on your page there, that's already up to 111. And that's why I just made reference, at least at Pine Grove School, we've certainly been heavily, you know, had a heavy impact in terms of like that immigration of new students. And so, our numbers always seem to tend, if you look historically from the past few school years, we've had a history of adding positions late in August. And so, that's why I made mention in there that, you know, we ended last year over 640 students versus even though we sit today at 621. So, to go back to your question, what would it look like if you were to take a position away? You know, it's a math problem, you go from eighteen or nineteen students to twenty-two or twenty-three in a classroom instead, which is not, it's not a deal, not at the elementary level, at any level, but certainly when you're talking about seven and eight-year-olds in a classroom, it's not a deal.
Because I did, 126 divided by six is about 21 versus what we had last year at 21.5. So, just getting a sense for how you would deploy the capital if something happened.
Sure. It's hard, and really, my opinion is it's a decision that's made as we get closer, and we know that's a hard thing as a principal to say, so I'd like to have, I'd like to tell you, you know, all of that today or next year if I could. That's my personality, but it's just so hard to know because those numbers can change. You know, honestly, some of those, like when you look at fourth grade with 151 students, I mean, you'd have to see something significantly changed there to make an impact, but when you look at a grade like second with 108 students, we could end this year with 120 students in that grade level, and we're only nine students away, which we seem like a lot, but between now and the end of the school year, it certainly can happen.
Okay.
It does.
I appreciate it, Jess.
Yeah.
Further questions? Only once, only twice. All right, you're out of the hot seat. Roaring Brook, Mr. Nellm Sturm, are you going to be addressing us on Roaring Brook?
I am, if you can hear me now. All right, pleased to be addressing you. Thank you so much for inviting all of us in this evening, and really appreciative that. It's a little bit of a different model of views, and compliments to Jean Anne for having the principals up here right now. And a lot of it, in many ways, is kind of what this guy just said, and that is by design. We built the budget in a more collaborative fashion this year than I experienced the previous year and in previous settings, frankly. And it was really useful for, I think, all of us to look at the elementary level and then moving up to the secondary, at how we're either aligned or not aligned. And we made some changes and some decisions. Nothing was shattering, but we found it to be collectively helpful to build this budget in a very collaborative kind of fashion. And it's a lot of fun to be sitting here this year as opposed to last year, because last year, we were really looking at mitigating some real, real significant challenges. And it's exciting for me to be in my second year now and to have your building experience behind me, a year of Avon experience behind me, and to be able to look at the budget creation process as an opportunity for us to say, what are the next steps? You know, kind of what do we envision for schools? What do we envision for a district? And in all seriousness, Justin did a wonderful job kind of laying out some of the curricular revisions that have gone on, that are enhancing instruction that our children are experiencing. We have been working a lot at R V S at Student Supports and looking at what needs to happen in terms of students that aren't performing quite where they need to, and are we getting them the right kinds of supports both within and outside of the classroom and doing something efficient and aligned, kind of in fashion, very proud of that work. We've been looking at student leadership as a goal within the building this past year, and it is very happily very low or no-cost kinds of things that we've been doing, and includes things like, it's kind of funny because I said, we're talking about these very grandiose things, but like how you dismiss five or 600 kids in a span of 20 minutes matters a lot in terms of like how a building functions. So, at R V S this past year, this year, we revamped our dismissal process entirely. It's working exceptionally well for us, and one of the reasons why it's working well is because we now have bus ambassadors, so students that are leading lines of buses outside, yeah, it sounds like a minor thing, but those things put together really enhance school climate, they give students opportunities to shine, grow, and it's really helping the sense of building. So, from a budget perspective, we are looking at, I don't want to call it a roll-forward budget, because that means that we're just kind of looking at it and doing the same thing over and again without thought. That's not the case, but it is a budget that does not incur any real substantial changes. R V S's population has been fairly steady, roughly 540 students on pre-K grade four continuance, or a little bit smaller than the guy to my right. We've also been fairly steady in it, and, you know, Kent, your questions about enrollment, it's, yeah, it would be nice to have that crystal ball to be able to say exactly what it's going to be like, and of course, we don't know. These are best guesses based upon the past trends and looking at what our current enrollment looks like. But as Jess said, if you look at the figures that we have, we are largely keeping the total number of sections steady, which keeps our class sizes at really, really nice numbers. You know, the largest number starts with a 21, and those are really, really impressive figures to have, and definitely benefit our students, and that's something that I'm kind of proud of to be a part of here, so that's one element to it. From the perspective of additional staffing, on the other half of the shared STEM role, and it's something that Jess and I looked at, and I think it was Deb was asking about, is this a complementary kind of a position? And it definitely is a complementary position to the library and media position. So, looking at it both from the pragmatics of what it does for our kids and from a scheduling perspective, you know, it's kind of like the A-week, B-week. So, we always have a full-time extra, if you will, professional in our buildings, likely operating out of the library for the most part, but I certainly also anticipate that a STEM teacher could do some pushing into classrooms as appropriate. Many years ago, in a past life, I worked at a STEM school, and we had a full-time STEM teacher, and it was a fantastic experience for our students for a number of reasons, a bunch of which Jess talked about, really getting deep into hands-on learning, problem-solving learning, and learning, product-based and project-based learning. And he did a great job talking about that as it relates to Maker Spaces in part. One other part that I'm really excited about is that, you know, it's like every morning I wake up with the current, talking about some bad news about Connecticut. And I think we're a state that has not done a good job selling itself recently because we are about five miles away from Jackson Labs, we're 10 miles away from the headquarters of U T C, we're 20 miles away from Pratt Whitney and the outstanding customer development lab that they have, which opens its doors to students on a regular basis, and kids can jump up into, not operating, jet engines, and literally have the opportunities to see hands-on some of the great engineering that goes on, you know, that's like a 20-minute or 30-minute ride away from here. So, one of the things that I would really be excited about doing, and certainly it's not R V S specific, but a focus that I'd have for the STEM teacher, is how do we build community connections? So, how do we make sure that our kids have experiences outside the building, not just inside, and be that a person that can form relationships to bring in professionals within the building, but also get our kids out there, take the show on the road, and head over to that awesome place where they build these incredible jet engines, so that, you know, our little guys and gals can see that this is a really tangible opportunity for me here in Connecticut, so I'm super excited about that. When I look at the other changes to the budget, there's not a ton of substantive changes, that's on purpose, it's because we are well-resourced and feel comfortable with it. And we definitely echo Jess's comments about the grade level TAs. That's been something that we missed this year, and that's something that we would hope to see return, just for the reasons that he stated, to provide the additional small group construction, to provide formal or informal interventions, and also to be able to support our highest learners, and that's not something we necessarily talk a lot about. So, I hope that that's something that is considered. It's not in the formal budget, because as we were writing up these proposals, we weren't sure where the state budget would land, so that's an important point for, I think, for the board to know. Other than that, in terms of supplies and materials, as Jess said, the ways there is a big significant increase. I'm also looking at making sure that we have the right balanced literacy materials over in my building. We've been looking to build up both within the classroom libraries and outside of classroom libraries, so that students have access to the most updated reading materials, basically, so we'll see some changes there. Really, other than that, that's kind of where we're at as a building. It's not a significant change, except for the STEM teacher, and that's a position that I'm really excited for, and it's something that the board gives strong consideration for.
Thank you very much. Questions regarding Roaring Brook? All right, Kathy Giroli first.
Just have a couple. And kindergarten, I think I'm confused. Your report on page 51 is significantly different from page 181. Kindergarten is showing 71 on our overall enrollment report with four to each... Kindergarten is showing 71 on our overall enrollment report with four teachers, four sections, whereas yours shows 105. So, sorry.
So, these are these messy estimates, and frankly, we don't have a great guess. If the historical trend was that the current kindergarten class that's in front of me right now is the smallest incoming group that I've seen, so that's the 72 students that we have currently in kindergarten. The history at RBS has been to be of more of a five or even occasionally a six-section group, so the 100 number is more of a historical average. And again, if I had that crystal ball, I would love it.
Okay. And then the only other thing, I think most of these were explained with Heather's comment earlier, but there's a world language teacher that was a more significant increase than I noted at Pine Grove. Most of the things were very similar, but that one was different. So, I don't know if there's something going on there, or is that from last year, timing issue also? Last year timing, okay, thanks. Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Chu.
So, thank you, Noam. I heard you comment that you agree with Jess about the TAs, and he did get specific to say K to second grade. Would you agree with that framework?
Correct.
Is there anything else that you can think of that you would like us to consider adding back?
I'm really pleased with this budget. I think it really meets our needs effectively while being responsible to town and I feel comfortable.
Thank you.
Mrs. Young.
So, I don't know if this is going to be a question for you or more for the...
Why don't you grab the microphone?
Not sure who the appropriate person is to answer the question, but can somebody provide a description of what the monies that will be coming in through open choice will be covering this year? Because in the past, to my recollection, they've covered quite a bit of the TAs.
We have not yet received the open choice monies for this year. And Title I, that covers a lot of those positions, we dropped $100,000 this year. So, we're still waiting for open choice. Title I, we lost $100,000.
So, would the intention then be to use those funds at some point when they come in to fill the TA positions that are currently not in the general operating budget?
Yes. When the funds come in, if they will cover our TAs going in, we will put them back in as soon as we receive the funding from the state. We're just not spending funds we don't have.
Interesting.
Further questions? Going once, going twice? Mr. Speedy.
Yes. So, I'm just looking at the enrollment numbers of Pine Grove versus Roaring Brook. You guys did a good job from here, that it's collaborative, and I appreciate you guys being working together. But in terms of the, the class sizes, they all sort of match up except for second grade next year? I know Jess, you said your number of 108 is really 111 transitioning from first to second. So, Noam, for your transition from first to second, I mean, it, it shows here, for Pine Grove, 108 students in six sections, for Roaring Brook, 107 students in five sections.
Yeah.
So, is 107 an accurate number, or is it larger than that, given where you have first grade this year?
Yeah, currently, yes, yeah. Just as I was talking about that this morning, we were noticing that because we did have that section disparity. Everything else is aligned pretty closely. You know, and my answer to you would be, I was looking at our, at our latest enrollment numbers that are not reflected here, and I've received three students in the last two weeks, a kindergarten, a third grader, and a fourth grader. You know, these, it's a little bit of a dice roll, you really just don't know. And, and I think that on some levels, there's also some decisions that we make as administrators where we say, there's some cohorts of students that really benefit from this one class sizes or not. And so that's, that's a little bit of a judgment call, frankly, but most of it, of course, is driven by the numbers. The history, again, looking at the long-term history of the building, appears that most of the students that we've received, if we receive them, highest variability is obviously in kindergarten, certainly. But then there also appears to be the jump in K to one, but I haven't seen it necessarily in other grade levels. But a funny thing over the summer is that we practice classes, we include everything that we include, and then the current third grade that I have, that's been a spot, I can't remember the exact number, but it was a surprising number of students, like seven students in third grade, you know? So, you just, you just can't tell. You just can't tell. So, there's a little bit of variability. We know that we're going to refine that, you know, as over the course of the school year so that we are more appropriately aligned with us.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions? Mrs. Young.
My question so much is, I'm wondering if the superintendent is aware or has been approached in any way regarding the two potential developments that are being proposed by Planned Arizona that would require significant enrollment, or potential enrollment increase? One is off of 44 behind Friendly's, and one is off of Arch Road.
No.
Well, that solves that one. All right. Okay. Going once, going twice, three times. All right, now we're up to Thompson Brook and Mr. Mike Rankowitz. I assume you're going to be handling that?
Yes, thank you very much. Again, just to reiterate, we've been a laboring point, do appreciate the opportunity that the principals have been given, as well as department heads to come and have a conversation with the board in terms of what our budget needs and requests are. One of the things I'd like to start off with is some of the positive things that have been happening through results of the budgets that you've supported in the past. One of them is the Family Connections Program that Thompson Brook School has. This past fall, we had two, two groups take a trip to Lazard Lanes in Plainville, where the students, through budget funding, were able, it was new students and it was choice students, were able to each invite a friend, it was almost like a newcomers club, if you will, to spend the afternoon after school, they could bus over to Lazard Lanes, play, were able to bowl, and they could do at least one game, and if some of those students are much quicker than others, and they got into the second part of the game, and then after an hour, we went over to the miniature golf course, they each got 18 holes in. Some students learned what a punter is versus a driver, even in miniature golf. But it was a good experience, nobody got hurt. Then they came back and they had, you know, pizza and desserts. And again, it was an opportunity for families to join in, in a way for friends of new students and choice students to meet the families of, you know, moms and dads, people of their newfound friends. So, again, that's, that was budget funded, and for that, we appreciate it. And if that line item gets adopted again, it'll be, we'll continue that work. Another was enrichment clusters. A couple summers ago, Joy Kuzinski and Mary Lebowski went to UConn and studied under Renzouli on enrichment for all protocol. And then they came back with Lucy Sweetman from the middle school who's studying that at UConn as well, and they presented to our staff how enrichment for all can look. It's called enrichment clusters. We're now in our second year of doing enrichment clusters, and I think part of the experience is that students really look at what options are available that are of interest to them. Students do, do an interest survey of the students, teachers look at that, what students would like to do, and they kind of formulate something that some feel comfortable facilitating because they're not teaching at their facility, and that others will say, well, if the students want to try it, I guess I'll try it too, I'll just, you know, learn with them as they go. So, we've had a variety of activities, but when it comes time for looking at how they give back to the community. On the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, the half-day early dismissal, we had a town meeting, and we had two girls from American Sign Language class, who stood on the stage, we opened up some of the panels, so they could be seen by all, and purposely moved the flag a little closer than it usually is, so that as we said the pledge of allegiance, we had two girls at Thompson Brook signing the pledge to the flag. And so, students, actually, paying close attention, they could also see, you know, how that was projected out. So, that was wonderful. Next week, Elizabeth Salvatore, the system principal, is leading us through a Say Something campaign, and within that, we're taking one of the enrichment groups called Kindness Rocks, and they're going to initiate a program as well, as far as, you know, literally kindness rocks. We have to go and buy, through budget, supported, once again, appreciate it.
Rocks?
The, you know, the little river rocks that students can paint an inspirational message on, and then put those in places throughout Thompson Brook and into the greater community. Eventually, that's supposed to go wherever, wherever they need to. So, again, those are just two highlights for us, but I do think the, the idea that the, again, the board has supported a program director, and Joy Kuzinski supported the math coach, and Mary Lebowski, who also is now, you know, has been expanded into science as well, is an opportunity for students to have much variety of learning experiences that they otherwise may not have, maybe thanks to the generosity and the foresight of the board to approve those types of, that type of funding. What's very exciting for, for Thompson Brook is we seem to have, we've written out the, it's not so much a bubble, but a dip, where we had to lose two sixth-grade teachers, two fifth-grade teachers two years ago, and two sixth-grade teachers this year, went back to full strength in sixth grade with 12 teachers. We'll still have 11 in fifth grade, but that will, those 12 teachers in sixth will certainly take some of the pressure off the fifth grade, the fifth grade classrooms are feeling now. You know, we do have six classrooms with 25 students in it, and for this particular year group, next year, we'll go from 11 to 12 teachers. Sixth grade operates a little bit differently than fifth grade. We're kind, it's kind of ironic that I'm sitting here, it's a Thompson Brook step reach from K4 to secondary learning. So, fifth grade is a self-contained environment. Teachers are teaching all subjects, there's a variety of co-talk classes with special education teachers. Every team has a special ed teacher and a para educator to help support those students and all students in their learning. Sixth grade operates on a modified middle school schedule. They have a content area expert, a teacher for science, for math, and one for English Language Arts and Social Studies. They don't, you know, they're whole, they do fight whole, you know, it's almost like first grade soccer, there's the wall, watch them all stay right near it. That's how they go from math to science to specials to English Language Arts. They have the opportunity, you know, next year, to, they won't have the opportunity to be with the same person all day long, while they may be on a team, they, who they're sitting next to in math, they may not see you again. Where that's a little bit different where we are now. What that does do is allow the students in the teams to be able to monitor the progress of the students and work with the students and coordinate, and help them manage their time a little bit better as they get into the older age or need that time management. So, anyway, next year, with budget approval, you'll be giving us two more sixth-grade teachers, maintaining us 11, 11 fifth-grade teachers. And if you'll notice on page 63, that puts our class sizes at 22, 21, as long as it holds well for, back in the month of October seemed like welcome to fifth grade month as far as every new student we had commit was in fifth grade, and then luckily, that stopped. Now, new students are coming in that are sixth grade. Again, not three in one week, but have had at least three over the last several weeks. So, that, new staffing wise, we're in good shape. The additional .5 social worker is going to be, I think, a great benefit for us. We have one school counselor for almost 500 students right now, and Sarah Chase does an outstanding job, but she can't do it alone. Jeanne and Heather recognize that, and we'll be sharing a social worker with the middle school, who can then do, you know, groups and other types of tasks and specifics that social, is fitting for a social worker that not necessarily a school counselor or a school psychologist would have to be involved with. But as a team of three, they'll make sure everybody gets what they, what they need. Very exciting is the opportunity that we'll have a full-time assistant principal again. This year, Bob served Thompson Brook for two years, half-time assistant principal, half-time director of technology. This year, Liz Salvatore joined us for .6. On paper, it looks like three days a week, but when you factor in all the professional days and everything else, it's a little less than three days a week she's, she's there at the school. And I think it's very important that that position is, again, fully restated so that it's another resource for teachers that don't have to wait for one administrator to be available to them. And then, you know, it just, it helps with evaluation and supervision of teachers, but also, I think, the committee did an excellent job hiring Liz in terms of her background, her knowledge, and what she can bring to instructional core for us. And the one bump in the language arts supplies is for words their way from the, from the district portion of it. So, again, well, we're not getting a STEM teacher, I don't feel we need one. We have Julian Collins Wilheim as our library media specialist, and she's just an outstanding resource for us. So, every student goes through what has half a semester of library. First half of the year, she is teaching the fifth graders about internet usage, how to recognize sites, how to identify and be able to challenge what you see on internet, just because this narrative is, I mean, it's true. And so, she is able to work with our students. She's also taken on some of that maker space type of approach. She's, this week, she's doing coding for all children, so sixth grade is incorporated into coming down, even though they technically don't have library yet. So, I think it is a position, while it's listed as a library media specialist, she's doing a little bit of the STEM work as well, but also it's a resource that, well, doesn't impact this budget, future budgets, I hope you never feel as though you can reduce the library media specialist at Thompson Brook School, because it's more than just that. And she's a complete team player. Several years ago, she, when she first joined us, she agreed to take on the book room, which we estimated was a collection of maybe 5,000 books, but after 8,000 something, she could give you the exact number very easily, it's now part of our, our library collection. And our library collection, if you take the inventory, is well over half a million dollars that somebody has to watch. And so, again, I may not make it a case for future budgets, but I just wanted to highlight that. The other thing as far as, what's very exciting is the grade five science and how that's grown. Mary Lebowski, again, has done an excellent job in working with a couple of teachers at each grade level, and we were there for the presentation last spring. But I think what's also important is she's allowed, or she's made connections with the high school, and we've had high school teachers come over and teach our fifth-grade teachers some of the science. And probably most importantly, they've also instructed our teachers what math to say or do. Don't, you know, there's certain things we don't let children have a preconceived notion about yet, and so it's really helped our teachers focus on just the hands-on portion of it in terms of, you know, knowing what their, what their role is. They don't have to expand on it. That's going to come later when they're in high school. So, again, those are very exciting opportunities that, you know, well, Mr. Swordebud has provided us.
Thank you very much. Questions regarding the Thompson Brook School budget?
How about this?
All right. Mrs. Chu.
Um, no, it's okay. So, Mike, on the library multimedia, is that part of that program, you were saying that required an increase in funding? I was just curious, because it goes up significantly, and I was excited to kind of hear what you were pointing in. I see it on page 71, under instructional supplies.
Uh, no, that, that's just, that's for the library itself. Some of there will be items that she would need for coding, for maker space type things, but also, you know, instructional supplies that she needs that, that I did a little harder than someone else before.
No, excellent. I was just excited to kind of hear what she's up to, because I'm very impressed with her myself, so I helped to scan a lot of those books with that project.
That, I could, that's an excellent point. She does have a slew of volunteers, I'd be remiss in trying to name all of them, but she, and the student leadership opportunities available. Julie's able to teach while other students in a different grade are coming in to check out books because she's got different grade level students in there, training her, her library helpers, so.
She's a valuable resource, very, very helpful to have her.
Thank you for reminding me.
Absolutely. So, I would like to give you the opportunity to speak to if there's something you would like us to consider for the, in this budget that isn't here.
Well, I think what's in the budget is, give me that, we'll be fine. The, you know, Jeanne and Anna and Heather, again, have, you know, looked at what was proposed, they've supported the, you know, the school mission, they've supported, you know, the importance of educating the whole child in terms of, you know, social emotional health and behavioral supports as well. They, she has supported the, some overtime for secretaries in advance. Again, that's part of, from the Avon Police Department to the Safe Schools back in the summer of 2013, just before I got here, in terms of, you know, making sure that the, you know, we have locked facility the entire time that students are in there for student activities until 4:30 when they end, and then Parkland Rec takes over, and then, then it's an open building as well. But that's not the word that's concerned at that point in time, I don't believe. So, I've got everything that I asked for, as it is right now.
Mr. Burke.
Thank you for the presentation, Mike. One of the comments that we got at the... One of the comments that we got at the budget hearing, I guess to the public, was an interest in the increased assistant principal position, and just wanted to get more color around the duties that you see and kind of the gaps right now, I know you mentioned a little bit, you're prepared for parts, but just to get more color around that.
I wouldn't say there's necessarily gaps, I think it's a question of timing and being able to get back to staff unless it's a critical issue, sometimes if there's a little bit of delay, something that wasn't your own to be critical, I think also the idea that we have, you know, supervision and evaluations that take place, it's just, it's a numbers game in terms of how many, how many people you can get to. I also think the, you know, in fairness to Bob, you know, I'm not, I never understood how he went from being a full-time director by 18 to two years of half-time, because all we did was increase the number of core books we had, and, you know, so while his department grew, you know, he had less time officially there, and we knew that at a moment's notice he was off to do district work, and, but, you know, we adapted as we needed to, and now we have the opportunity to make sure that we get back to full strength, and I think it's important that I continue to advocate for that. Did that answer your question?
Thank you.
Further questions? Seeing none, I think it's time we move on to the Avon Middle School. Dave Kimball, are you delivering the report?
Rumor has it.
All right, excellent, as long as the rumor is true, I'm happy, and the camera will recognize you from the back of your head. Ah, there you go, it wasn't easily visible from behind you.
I'll work on that. All right, well, thank you, everybody. First off, I want to thank Central Office, and I want to thank my colleagues to my left on being still new, somewhat to the district, and the first budget round, their support has been tremendous, and it truly has been, I can't emphasize that enough, and going through this process elsewhere, it really was, and thank you for answering all my questions, and my random phone calls, and emails, and all these other things, so just thank you very much. So I'm going to kick off with what we've been doing over the past couple of months. So our focus has been at AMS to first start off with our culture, and we did that by discussing our why statement, and why are we here, what is it that we, we want to do for our students and for the community in which we serve, and we rallied ourselves around our four pillars, and our four pillars have been about compassion, curiosity, responsibility, and resilience, and we felt that these are characteristics that will support students not only in their academics but in their life, and if you think of ourselves, even in our workforce right now and in our families, these are characteristics that we must follow in life. And the beautiful thing about this is having a team environment and being broke up into teams as we are, which is very unique, as Mr. Rehnquist was talking about, allows us to do this on a micro level with students as well as an entire school. So it's been really wonderful to watch kids have these discussions with their teachers and have this be part of their vocabulary on a regular basis, when they're walking through the school, and we're discussing any topic, when I'm coming into classrooms, it's being integrated into their curriculum, they're being able to talk about this on a regular basis, and that's been extremely exciting. You know, we've built a culture where we are starting to look at how we can recognize students in a different way, so we started off with our AMS shout-outs, so this is taking those four pillars and saying at any given moment, if a student demonstrates that they're being compassionate, responsible, immediately we have an electronic form where teachers can put that out there, that form comes to the administration, the student gets a certificate, I get to meet with them and talk with them, and they get recognized for their efforts, knowing that not every time a kid's always going to be compassionate, curious, responsible, they're going to exhibit one of those at some point, and we can recognize them in real time, and that's great, because we're laminating the alums that we have, it's going up and around, around the building, and kids have been getting excited about that, and the BTO has been starting to get involved as well, so it's becoming larger, which is very nice. As far as our, you know, kind of going back to our team, when you look at our academics, we've been strong this year, as you saw earlier last week, when you look at our SPAC scores and when you look at our CMTs, our scores have been, been very good, and I attribute that to, back to that team, back to the concept that I have four content area experts that are creating wraparound supports for students, collaborating with the counseling office, collaborating with the school psychologists we needed, and being able to reach out to parents and have that conversation, so when a parent comes in, they're sitting down together, and we're, we're really focusing on that triangle, we're talking about school, family, and the community and the teachers. So again, our, our academics are pushed for that academic excellence, as my colleagues had mentioned earlier, is never waning. As far as the budget in front of you, you'll see that there's a decrease for us, we're starting to pick up that dip that Thompson Brook had, and, you know, to be responsible, we've scaled back in order to allow that FTE to be shifted to where it's needed currently. You'll see that it still maintains our class sizes to a reasonable level, roughly around 23 students, and that's taking into consideration, you know, the new people coming in, looking at our trend lines of how many kids are coming in, how many kids are picking in at the same time, so that stays consistent, and it's something that we can manage and work with moving forward, if the enrollment stays, stays where it is over the next couple of years, as we see. In addition to that, you do see the, the additional resources for makerspaces and for textbooks, you know, the social studies textbooks right now, they, they no longer exist, they can't be bounded, we just need, I don't know, I have another way to, way to put that. And as far as the makerspaces, which is really exciting, the makerspaces dovetails with a lot of the work that the staff is doing right now, so what we did earlier in the year is we broke up into action research groups, and what that means is that teachers self-selected under the big umbrellas of literacy, numeracy, grading and measurement, and social emotional supports, and they found areas of interest, and their charge has been in small groups of maybe three to five people, to look at the current research that's out there on these topics, and then find interventions and strategies that they can use in their classrooms in real time. And so when you look at our building-based professional development, when you look at our, you know, once a week, you know, once a month getting together, and you look at our faculty meetings, our time revolves around that, it revolves around researching, discussing, bringing stuff back to their classroom, and also archiving all this information, we're leveraging Google apps, so we have all the research placed into folders where the entire staff can access it, we have links to all the strategies that we've been using, or what teachers are getting out of it, so that when a new person comes into our building, and we can honestly say to them, these are the best strategies that work with our students, so right away you're up to speed and you're there, and they're doing this together, and it, it's fascinating to see, if you have an opportunity to come in and sit and listen to them, there's genuine debate going on, you know, why this is working, what's working about it, and that's, that for me is really exciting, because you want that tension, right, because that tension shows where the passion is. So I'm really excited to see how that moves forward, and where our achievement goes because of that. The way it dovetails with our makerspaces is we do happen to have a gifted and talented group that's working, Lucy happens to be a part of that, we also have a STEM group that's working as well, so this will work perfectly with as the makerspaces start to develop and how we can integrate both of those together and move forward. In addition to that, we've done a lot of work with our seventh grade, we've talked about the seven 12 continuum, and how research skills are developed early, and on those research skills, how we can build upon them one piece at a time, so looking through the social studies lens of doing a research project, and how students are getting into databases, understanding what a credible source is, and how then we can build upon that in eighth grade and ninth grade and forward. So that's been some exciting work as well. The addition of the social worker, I find is critical, I find with two counselors and a school psychologist, and roughly right now about 550 kids, which would be only about 510, there's, there's never downtime, if there is, it's a phone call to the parent, and, you know, there are times where you see these individuals fulfilling the obligations of what you would see a social worker do, so seeing that come back, I believe is a great move, and I hope the board continues to support that. Other than that, I'm going to go for questions, I'm more about brevity, and I'm just more curious what you want to ask me, because I'll just keep talking, to be honest with you, it's a go for it, but yeah.
All right. Jay?
So in looking at the smaller enrollment for seventh grade, you're reducing a language arts and a social studies teacher, so.
We're reducing two teachers.
Okay, so, okay, art shows here is language arts and social studies, so it may not be those, and I guess, will still be three teams, or how will that work with less teachers?
So there's a couple of ways we can look at this, we can look at a mini team, where you have two teachers who are dual certified, who are teaching a very small team, we could look at this where we basically just have two teams, and we have those additional either science or math teachers attached to those teams, and then just that decreases the overall load of the amount of kids that are going around to those teachers, so there's different ways in which we can leverage them, but I'm going to wait for enrollment numbers are, and then run the numbers through Power School to see which was going to give us the best fit at that time, ultimately, so hopefully April.
Further questions?
Go ahead with her first.
All right, Mr. Shu.
Thank you. So I see you have an increase in your library multimedia as well, do you want to speak or tout to anything that's exciting going on there?
I believe that would be the resources for the makerspaces.
Makerspaces, yes. So I want to give you the opportunity to speak to if there's anything that you see as lacking that you would like us to consider.
I think the budget that's been put forward is responsible, I think it's on point, and that, you know, the collaboration, those questions came up, we asked, you know, if there was anything, Gina was pretty straightforward with us, you know, if there's something that didn't, and there was no backdoor deal saying, I wish I had this, and we were getting drunk, I'm not here, it just didn't happen. So I think what you have in front of you puts us in a position where we can continue to move forward, we can push our staff forward, and we can push our students forward in a responsible manner, and I think in this climate, in this time, it's the right budget.
And I want to say I am very excited about what's been presented to us, so it's really just a genuine question to make sure that you get the opportunity to make a wish list for sorts, because if we're feeling generous, why not, right? So, thank you very much.
There you go, all right, Mrs. Earl.
Just looking at my notes from earlier, so I think most of the questions that I wanted to ask have been answered via Heather's commentary, but two things I know, or one thing I noted money-wise, and then another comment I just wanted to make overall, in the coaching for interscholastic, there appears to be a decrease, yet the transportation for interscholastic increased, that struck me as odd.
We had an issue last year where we didn't have enough money for the buses, and so there, I guess there was a scramble, so what we decided to do was to increase that now to, to budget for it, so we don't fall back into that position again.
Got it, okay. Overall, one of the things I did note was, from my recollection of transfers, you did a good job of putting money where things weren't the prior year and that were transfers, so I know other people have a good eye on that, and I appreciate it. This is kind of a global comment, and I, I say this because of the lead-in for the middle schools write-up, which, there's not a problem with the way it wrote up, but it hit me, that I've read in survey after survey that our average middle-of-the-road student is not mentioned, and so we talk about the needy child being, needs being met, and the, you know, advanced child and enrichment being done, but what I never want to see happen, and I've seen it in many surveys where people think it is happening, I saw it happen with a student that I know well, if they're not here, and they're not here, and they're just coasting through, they could be being missed, so I just never, I don't want, this is my last time going through the budget, I just want to share that that is a concern that I've had and will have, so I just want to make sure that we keep an eye on that student, and I'm, I am overall very pleased, I want to give credit to the fact that negotiations committee has worked hard to get us to a place where we could add these back in, so there's great credit for the negotiations talent, you know, the work that's been done collaboratively with the unions the last couple of years to allow us to add. I agree, based on all I've learned the last few years, that adding the social emotional supports are critical, and I hope that that will help with that maybe middle student, guidance counselor, those are critical, you know, having the social emotional, I just, it's not written anywhere about that student, so I just want to give my little last comment, don't lose sight, because they're, they're my kids.
Just a comment on that, we often, we often say we default to the middle, right, it is almost easier to say, you know, teach to the middle, the students who are a little ahead are worried that they're going to be okay, and the other ones, we'll kind of bring them up. I don't see that here. The conversations I often have with staff is about how do I move this kid forward, regardless of where they are, if you look at our SRPI process, and if you look at our tiered interventions, that's what it's about, is here you are today, how do I increase that, move you forward regardless of where you are, even when we were talking about teacher evaluation this year, when we were talking about teachers' SLOs in AMS, you know, almost 90% of the, the SLOs for us is 100%, but some students will show growth in length, so it means wherever you start, you're going forward, and that's, that's on purpose, because I, I think there's a fear, that we're always talking about the fringe, right, but ultimately, I think in the past practice has always been, once you teach to the middle, you're safe, right, because you're going to kind of, these kids will be all right, and kind of bring some of them, but when we reframe that argument, say 100% of the students will grow, everybody wins at their level and at their time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I think one of the things we have to keep in mind is we're talking about enrichment coach, not a gifted and talented program, it's for all kids, you know, I think having that enrichment coach go in there really helps us to, to find what, what their passions are, just like within enrichment clusters, that's, that's a school-wide thing, it's not a select group, so I just think would be, we, we are considering what I would call my kids, personal kids, you know, they were middle-of-the-road students, as was their dad. But anyway, I just wanted, we are, there is a definite concern for that, okay, thank you for, thank you for bringing it.
Yeah, and I would say, it's thrilling to read these new programs and what, what you're doing, I think I saw more of an impact with missing the middle-of-the-road student at high school, so when I look at the reduction in the guidance counselor and a couple other things, really struggling with that one, but that's tomorrow, that's Wednesday night, so thank you all.
Can I just make a comment before?
Mrs. Boyer?
I just wanted to say thank you so much, this was really exciting, I think I share your comment that this is a responsible and really forward-thinking budget, that, that everybody has worked together to really balance the needs of the town and the taxpayers and our students, I'm really, really proud and excited that my own children are going to experience some of these changes, and I really appreciate your, your time in putting this together for us.
Thank you, all right. I think we're done, so why don't I dismiss the principals tonight, and the next item is athletics budget.
Thank you all, appreciate your time.
Of course, if you'd like to stay and watch, you can watch the athletic department.
That's up to your boss.
Good evening, everyone. Just want to first thank all of you for, I guess I can speak, all of us for having us here to do this, and the support we've gotten from the Central Office for closing this budget, putting it together, and having the opportunity to summarize it for you.
You keep your voice up just a teens, because.
Is it on?
I think it is.
It is on, but you have to sort of like.
Close off a little bit louder.
Sounds like a coach.
Yeah, we might do that.
Use the whistle.
So basically, you know, having the opportunity to talk a little bit about how it was put together, and about the whole process behind the athletic closing, was to maintain and understand the budget climate we're currently in, have been facing, expressing that to our coaching staffs when we talk about supplies, and what is in need, and what is actually in need, and to really use what we need to get through, to have a, you know, solid, positive, and safe program, and I really stress with our coaching staffs, when we put their supply requests together, to understand where we are, and that, you know, I will determine if we're going a little bit over, then we need to really step back, and the coaches were great, and I gave them guidelines to follow, they followed them, I didn't have any conversations where people were really like, I really, really, really need, they, they understood, they went and looked back and said, okay, we can do this, and we will go forward, and that's some, as we said, as you talk about creep buying, when we've had extra things left over, the coaches are very good about saying, look, I need this this year, and I told them, are you sure? And they've been great about that, so I pass off to them for doing that. So I pass off to them for doing that. As I went through again, I looked at what helps us maintain where we are and obviously there's increases each year due to, to some factors with fees, with CIC, the CCC, the conference that belongs to the state level, obviously the stipends with the contracts and the fees in general because some sports, for example, swimming, cross-country, track have invitationals that are part of the regular schedule that have separate fees than just our normal fees to join the conference. So those can tend to go up and some of those we don't know about until we get there. So I have to prepare a little bit, especially with, I mean, you look at something like rentals with hockey sports like hockey and swimming where we had to rent the facility and there's no way around that and we're kind of at the mercy of Bayville Farms and those places. And as CCSU is a state facility, which we know, they can tell you, we make them up a little and then we get the bill in the summer and it's a little more than we anticipated. So Heather and I have, have had a lot of discussions and talked in preparation for the years coming ahead and have, I think, have put together something where we're, we're in a safe area where we know if things do go up and something, for example, crew regattas, as the coaches have told me, they don't know until maybe a month before what that fee is going to be, whereas the CIC for the most part, I know baseball is eighty-five dollars every year until they decide to change that, where official fees are pretty much the same. Transportation depending, we do transport a lot of teams because we are off-site, as you know, for many sports, whereas other districts, as a former athletic director here told me when I was a coach, this is at least a bar just from where I came from, just on transportation alone. So those costs as we, we go through specialty and look at what we're doing and take that into accountability from where we are. And obviously we're busing students who stay now in the winter, now nighttime we bus back, those students from the open choice program as well, which is great because every student deserves the same opportunity, no matter what. And we've had a great turnout for the fall, a great turnout right now in the winter. And I think when I look back at putting this together, that I, I really feel that to keep us safe where we need to be with service sports, especially with contact with equipment, we can't really take anything off. We have to do certain things, we have to pay certain costs. Again, the rental fees, the memberships and things of that nature, that comes with it. And obviously if you're, for example, next year we're hosting a home football game at the end of the year, we're gonna need lights, so that has to come into play through our, through the athletic budget when normally we haven't been doing that. So yes, there's increases in certain areas, but some of those are due to just the nature of athletics in general. And I try to look at every aspect we could and keep things at a base to where we needed technical services. I can tell you, I had this discussion earlier today with Gina, scoreboards, obviously they're outside Europe, so that's this year, the day before the football game, it didn't work. So I had someone come up here and it's, it's not cheap to do that and, but we have someone who's reliable, he's very good, but those, even though they're somewhat newer, they do tend to, you know, have a glitch here and there. And so I have to be proactive in that. In the past, looking back, it was, we were getting by and I just said to myself, we're not gonna live on the edge anymore a little bit with that, so I'm preparing just in case anything does happen. That we are prepared for those things, the athletic training room with the things like the X machine, those, that equipment sometimes needs to be updated. So I've taken everything into account to make sure that we can continue doing what we're doing right now, that we're doing this year, next year, without, again, we're not adding any programs, any staff, incentive volunteers, which are non-stipend and that can fluctuate from year to year. So I think what I put in front will, you know, continue to keep our student athletes safe and hopefully have a positive, you know, experience. I've also focused a great deal in the last year or two on the academic piece with our student athletes and our coaches and now our regular checks and grades and keeping everybody understanding that their priorities are their academics. And I've had many meetings with student athletes that I needed to reaffirm that to. Our teachers have been great, I can work closely with our guidance department to make sure our students are understanding, especially those who are wishing to compete at the next level, understanding the clearinghouse, what they need to be taking and the role that academics does play and understand that that is priority number one when they're here and that the athletics is a, you know, it's not a right as a project. And I think what I put forward for our budget actually will encompass what we have now and continue hopefully to grow and keep us on the right path of heading on there.
Excellent, thank you very much. Questions? Jay Speeler?
Thanks, Tim. Your presentation, I know this is information that I think you're gathering, present to our finance subcommittee meeting for December, but, and just wanna say this predates your time here as athletic direction, the way our programs are set up and what is funded. And I know you spent a lot of time working with the crew party and understanding what is paid for by the district, what is paid for by the booster club, what is paid for by the families. And when I say predate your time, there is inconsistencies across sports and some of them I noticed through my own children participating. So my son just played soccer where he's provided with shorts and socks. Now he's gonna be playing lacrosse in the spring and we were given a list of required items, shorts, socks, two other things, two hundred dollar expense for a family participating in boys' lacrosse. And that's not even including a helmet, which if you're playing at varsity level, you're purchasing a helmet which is about two hundred fifty dollars, which is different than if you're playing football, which I think you're provided with a helmet.
Yes.
Now, one thing I'm saying is before your time here, but I just think we need to be more aware of what is costing families besides the pay-to-participate fee, what the booster club is helping fund and what the district is paying and understand how, I know each sport costs a different amount, we've analyzed that before.
Yes.
But there's also, you know, similar costs which are shared by families, which is inconsistent across sports.
Correct. No, that's understandable. When I came in, I, I looked at that and especially in August lacrosse, that's the one sport that kinda really stood out because it does, it's the helmets and I talked to the coaches and I said, well, how long has this been going on? And I said, since we've been, you know, it's helmets, the pads, we provide the uniforms and any spirit wear, which I consider is, if you see the kids walking around with sweatshirts or shirts, that's, that's done through, it could be done through boosters, it could be done through the parents or the kids themselves, they do it through Connecticut Sports, where that's not us. We do provide certain sports as part of the uniform packages, like basketball, when you have the uniform that comes with the shooting shirt, that's usually part of the cost, but most other sports don't. But actually, looking into that, we talked about what it costs for, you know, the difference in lacrosse is the one sport that has stood out, that I've talked with many coaches, other many A.D.s in the conference and asked, what are they doing? Like, do they have a separate fee? And a lot of them are on the same place where we are right now. And I said, well, where do we go? Because I talked with Heather about this too, on how to bring that gap closer and it's gonna be tough. I mean, look, as you said, there's an expense there, helmets are not cheap and because of the safety factor and the reevaluation of them. So it's something we do have to look into and I'm gonna have to look to budget for in the future if we're going to close that gap. And looking at it is, as far as what we do provide and we don't, again, we provide all uniforms and obviously most footwear is pretty much, we don't provide footwear. If someone did need something, I'm sure coaches in the past have, have had things, if they had something or need to do something, they could. But in most cases, we have not provided. Now, if teams wish to get into basketball, there are rules that does occur at a particular own cost, not through the district. Lacrosse is the one sport that I will say that is because of the, the contact and the padding that has been something that we're looking into, trying to narrow that gap because I know what this is gonna cost. And I know we've been, with crew, I know we've now, Heather and I, we've added them into the uniform process, so that will be taken care of. Obviously, there's some things, as we've talked, like swimming, obviously we can't do swimsuits and because of the hygiene and things of that nature. So we do, do swim caps every year and they're a one multiple purchase and things like that. So there's some we can, some we can't. So I think for the future, one of my goals is to, is to try and narrow the gap in that aspect and we'll be looking at different ways. And I have spoken with a few other districts on how they're in the same process of starting to figure that out.
All right. Mrs. Boyer?
When, and I don't know who would be better, but when we, when we talk about lacrosse, for example, if we had a student who, I know we have pay-to-play forms that would allow the student to play if they were not able, what happens to that child that can't afford? I mean, so we're waiving the fee or we're paying the fee through whatever way and then what happens when they have to now pay?
For equipment, there has been in the past that I've, I've only once been alerted to this by a coach, where we did have extra equipment that was certified and it was on and it may have been donated. My first year this came out, it was a former player didn't play anymore, parents, it was brand-new equipment and they donated it to crew.
You keep your voice up just a little bit.
Sure. We had form, we had, I think, my first year, if I remember correctly, it was lacrosse, there was a full set of equipment that we did use that was certified, we made sure of that and it was a former player had, no one came out and it basically donated to the program. Now we can look into those options as well to cover those costs if needed to be.
All right, thanks.
All right, Mrs. Erle.
In the rental, there's an increase, about twenty-four thousand. And I just wanna clarify that they're not, you know, you did a good job with summarizing things, but I just wanna make sure, unlike what happened last year, I totally was surprised by some reductions and then it became a big issue. And I'm, I'm trusting that this process this year won't have that, but I just wanna make sure, is power 10 included in the rental?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, I have that in front of me.
That's, I don't need to know the amount, I just wanna know because...
That is. There was the increase for central, which we anticipate, the hockey increases. I can tell you, we put the increase for Battersham for the rental for crew.
Yes, yeah.
And then again, with the city of Hartford, we are still wondering, that could be pulled out from under us after this year. And so we are still in the process of hopefully having a contingency plan, I'm hoping to contain. We also picked up boat storage for crew, which was never budgeted before, so I've added that and so that all kind of adds up. And we also have the, without the ability of a press box for football, it's required for films, for film exchange for huddle, they have to film. And the height of the stands where we are now does not give an actual quality, which we were told, so you have to be on a lift.
Right.
So we have to rent lifts for the football games now for, for both teams to, to be able to do that or for our staffs to be out there and film to do exchange and it's part of the requirements now. So those have to go into rentals and obviously if they have a press box, that's null and void, but we've had to make, do what we had. And we do that with the United Rental, so that was put in there as well for an extra game. And I do for anything to do with some of the sports, especially home activities like football, you have to plan, if you do play a state game, it has to be under the lights, so you have to prepare if, in case you have those, just like fees, if kids do go to New England, we have golfers go to New England, those are separate fees that are not normally, I have to anticipate that if that happens, we do, are we able to cover it? So those all do kinda factor into the rentals, that's the increase.
All right, I just wanted, like I said, to clarify so that, not a last minute surprise and the other one that was a last minute surprise to me last year was, are we keeping all levels of sports in each sport? So we're not getting rid of JV in certain select sports?
Right now, the only thing that we did reduce last year was freshman football.
I understand.
Right now.
But you didn't, but you didn't reduce JV from that. Certain sports, there was discussion about removing no freshman and no JV.
There was, in some of the sports, we have three levels, in others we have, like for instance softball, we have JV and varsity. And it came down to sometimes there's, the enrollment, the numbers of it were, were teetering to the point where we couldn't field a team possibly. So when I did the reduction scenario with the two sports, I believe it was tennis and golf, I looked at, it was volleyball was one mentioned. So I went through all first, would be DBs, and looked at the numbers. Obviously, our, our big numbers are in sports as in lacrosse, soccer, things of those natures. And I looked at where our moment was and where it will be possibly and I, I looked at what would be the least amount of number of student athletes affected. And that's kinda where I went. Now, obviously to, to remove a JV and a freshman program, which would be very tough because now you're giving one option for four grades and in there, and I can tell you, in this conversation I just had with two other districts about last week, they're, they've gone from a full program now down to next year, probably one varsity co-ed in a matter of a year and a half almost now. So that's tough and we're not, right now, I don't see the numbers we have in projections, I don't see us having to do that.
Okay, just wanna make sure that we see.
Yeah, no, I believe the last thing I ever wanna do is go through not just one and two. That means you're, you're really struggling to even program four. And right now, we, we have the numbers and a sport like golf, it's hard because you have the varsity spots and then you have, as I've been talking to the coaches, like year to year, sometimes you get an overwhelming amount of kids.
Right.
And then all of a sudden, it's like, we had tennis, the co-ed, we had eleven girls and four boys. And so other teams don't wanna come play us if they have thirteen or fourteen kids and we have four.
Well, there's a change in coaching though too, that, you know, that, that gets attached to certain coaches.
Absolutely, that's true. And when there is a coach who's here for a decent amount of time and then there's a turnover.
Tennis was a big change.
Tennis was a big change, yes. So you're right, there's that unexpected, they don't know what to think, I don't know if I'm gonna go up. And we're trying, you know, that's, that happens everywhere, so we hope, you know, we do have a good amount of coaches right now who have been here for twenty-five plus years, so. And those programs eventually at some point are going to turn over, so you wanna hopefully keep the interest in.
Well, credit to you and Heather, because I know you did increase areas that required transfers last year that drove me crazy, so thanks.
All right, Mrs. Young?
So a couple of questions, one on maintenance. There have been a number of items, like for example, the scoreboard at the high school that the booster club actually raised funds for and donated to the community, or like the tennis courts, the infrastructure for those tennis courts, which were paid for essentially by the community. So I'm concerned that we have enough money set aside for maintenance so that we don't end up with deferred maintenance issues. I mean, if something, for example, as small as the scoreboard at the middle school in here is not working, is that true?
I have not been informed.
I got a call from a parent from who was here yesterday, from a basketball game, it wasn't working.
Oh, in the gym?
Yes.
Okay, I have not been aware of that. That would be the middle school gym closed.
But another...
But in other, facilities-wise, I would need to be, that would, director of facilities, we get a call or Dave from the middle school could call me. We, in the past, looking through the budget, not, not anything with the middle school scoreboard, I don't believe in that.
The high school scoreboard, either one.
The high school, even more, yeah. If those scoreboards are out, I'm, if it's here, I'm notified immediately and we do, that's why with the technical services I have increased, we do have the money.
Okay, good.
Yes, absolutely.
And in the past, there have been issues with inventory, like for track, where stuff, we can't keep track of stuff and end up spending a lot of money replacing equipment that is simply left behind in me. So I'm wondering if as part of our presentation to a refinance subcommittee, there can be some sort of list of inventory that shows...
There is, detailed.
Okay, awesome.
I can tell you, I'll give you an instance, we, with the uniforms now, when they come in, stadium systems has an inventory list of what comes to us. The coaches get that list, when kids are given out uniforms, we know who has what number, what size. So now like in order to process of returning them, when something is missing, we know which student is, they are given a notice, their families are given a notice, that has to be returned. So we have detailed data on that, which I have to say, the turn-in rig was very good in the fall. Equipment-wise, coaches have to do an inventory and turn that in to me and we talk about it. And I can say in the last two years now, as someone who coached track for fourteen years, the track material now is, is not bucking away. And a lot of it has to do with, and I talk to the coaches about this, as much as you wanna give kids responsibility and delegate things at times, which you want your student athletes to do, ultimately it's your responsibility to make sure that things are put away, that everything is where it needs to be. And I've rehashed that with my staff each season, our coaches' meetings, preseason meetings, reminder emails during the year. And so far, and I say in the last year, it's increased dramatically. So we are pretty fine with what we get and we have new equipment, it's noted, it's put away storage-wise, you know, we're working on storage issues with, we have down below, outside, inside now. I just the other day cleaned out another closet and rearranged it, so we give out more, more room now for some different things of storage, different sports as we go through here. So it's not as scattered as it was before and there's a whole process of, I'm going through closets now as we speak weekly and kind of redoing and reorganizing hopefully in the year from now. I have a whole plan over the gym area, that would be more storage and some other things going on, so.
All right.
I have one.
Jason, in your name.
I just was, at the bottom of page one twelve...
I just was, at the bottom of page 112, it's the contracted services line and it's going up by just under eighteen thousand dollars. So I just was curious, number one, what that was. And as I read across the years, it sort of looks like that's money that probably was spent anyways and wasn't necessarily budgeted. So I'm just curious what it is.
It's like contracted police for gangs, ambulance, our Hartford athletic train.
It's the under armor required, reconditioning.
Yes, okay.
It was previous, it has to be spent every year.
Bad number.
Bad number.
Yes, it's the reconditioning, things of that nature.
The reconditioning of what?
Equipment.
Equipment, your armor equipment.
They handle all of our uniforms, storage, if there's ribs, tears, they notify, they fix. They certify all the helmets for football, the padding, so it's up to code. Things are, it's, it's a detailed process where if you're doing it on your own, it's, it's the liabilities. This company has been doing this for years and it, it keeps us within the storage. We have a limited amount as it is, it's nice to have everything boxed, put away, stored in a safe facility, ensure everything of that nature. So it's something that we started before I was here, the year before, and we've continued. And it's, my discussion with Heather, it's, it's been a lifesaver. A lot of other schools are starting to go to that. And I think it's, as someone who's been here for a long time and noticed how we've, everything was spread out wherever we could find spaces. And that's why, as you say, a lot of things were starting to go because people were sharing areas and all of a sudden you go in and something's gone and no one knows where it is. So now we've kind of fixed that problem and that's probably the one fee you see in there that goes in every year.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay. Ms. Chu.
Thank you, Tim. So I want to give you an opportunity, is there a wish for something that isn't included that you would put a little plug in for, that we should know about?
Of course, I'll say the field, but that's not. No, actually, B, I can say the freshman football team, having discussions with our head coach. And I can say on a personal level, someone who spent 13 years coaching that sport, when you lose a program like the freshman program, it eventually will trickle up the ladder and affect your numbers and affect your overall program. And our coach knows that, I think I saw this year in my conversations with some, some community members and some student athletes who, I didn't want to come out this year because I knew I had to play JV schedule. And that's for a 14-year-old to go up against a 16-year-old, which it does happen. It can be, can be intimidating and it can be tough. And for other schools who have lost programs like that, it, it takes a while to make the turnaround. Some survive and some decline until they get it back. That is something that I know was, I know wasn't forefront, I know there's a lot of other things that we have. But I think in the future, it's something I'd like to see back because I think it will only help our program down the road with numbers, which is, you know, we have numbers, but again, if you do have injuries, you're going from experienced senior to possibly inexperienced sophomore at the varsity level that's stepping in happy to play, which I give the kids credit who do that, it's tough. And we've had it done, but it is, it's tough. And it can, and it can deter especially everything that's out there with that sport alone now. It can make people think twice about, and then if they don't start your freshman year, which I remember my first year here, I had 16 kids and only three of them had ever played organized football before. And that's changed. And I think to make it a safe and educational experience, which is a sport which you really need to teach proper technique, if you're coming in as a sophomore just learning, it can be, it's, there's a big learning curve there. And our coaches do a great job of trying to keep everybody safe and using the proper techniques. But a program, I'd love to have that.
So do you feel that if you hired a freshman coach, that would generate more interest among students or you just think?
Having that coach, the extra coach helps, but having just that, will be developmental or freshman program because you go into now as a freshman sophomore combo, which is your JV, a few juniors. You play another school, another town that's maybe a little bigger. They're going to have a lot of juniors possibly because they have a huge senior class or they're going to have a team that's mostly sophomore and juniors. So you're going in there kind of at a little disadvantage as it is. And it's tough talking to the coaches and our kids go in, they, they go after it, but it's, it's definitely frustrating. And I know it's, it's been tough, but you know, we worked through it and, but I know it's something I, I think down the road it, it could hurt our, our overall program.
Is there a number of students that would have to participate to make that same feasible?
You, you know, anywhere from, you need at least 11 out there. You'd like to have ideally 15, 16, 18, 20. And it depends on the town, obviously, depending on the class size of your school. Some of the double L schools, it's, I used to coach a double L school and we had 50 freshmen on the average every year showing up. And obviously, we didn't finish with 50, but I mean, here you'd average, a couple of years ago, where there was probably 22, 23. I think this year, our freshman class was 12, if I'm not mistaken, so. And I, you know, I know some that didn't come out that were probably would, and I know others who were wavering and things of that nature. So it's, it's tough on a program that you, you need numbers and to keep things stabilized as you go through the years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions? Going once, going twice. Alright, you are also dismissed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The last item down for new business is proposed 2018, 2019 technology budget. Robert Voitek presenting.
It is.
Excellent, alright.
We'll show and tell. So again, I would also like to thank everybody, this is a little bit different experience. We really didn't have a chance to kind of come to the table and talk about what great things we're able to do because we're funded the way that we are, but I really appreciate being able to, to talk to you all. And I know that my team would really like to say how much they appreciate the support that they, they've been getting. I have a 7.0 FTE department that includes myself. We have a database person, we have Elizabeth Ferry, I'm sure you have run into her multiple times. She is a whirlwind of enthusiasm and makes it through the entire district finding great things that teachers can do in their classroom. We have a new hire that's the senior network administrator and that makes my department whole again. I have three FTE of folks that go out and do what I call the break fix, where something isn't working, they get in and they figure out what it is and get it repaired and move on to the next thing. The good news about the quality of folks that I have now is that they're not looking at the symptom, they're looking at the issue. And so we have far fewer times where we have to go back and do support second or third time. I want to talk a little bit about what you've been able to help with for this school year because it's a really transitional time for us and then talk about the budget itself. This year is a pilot year for the high school. These are the laptops that faculty will soon be getting. They're less than half the weight of the old laptops. The biggest complaint that we had about the laptops was that they needed a dolly to carry them around from point A to point B. They wouldn't take them home during the summer in breaks because they were too heavy to put in their car. This is a completely different experience than they'll have in the past. It's a touch sensitive screen and they have a stylus, so they'll actually be able to write on it. The newer technology has something called mirror cast. If you purchased a TV in the last year or two, it probably has something called screen mirroring, which means that you can take your mobile device or a laptop and wirelessly project to the new television set. This year, we're going to be piloting some, they call them a dongle. It's a little device that hangs on to our latest generations of projectors in the classroom and will allow teachers to be untethered. They won't have to stand behind their desk to teach. They can go up, around and circulate during the class. They can annotate on this screen, which will be projected on the projector. It's an added cost to the existing projectors that we have, but the last round of a particular model that we are using right now has that capability. Now what we have to figure out is how we can manage that, but it could be a real game changer in terms of the way teachers teach because they have in the past relied on the smart board with the smart notebook software. And we found that their actual use of that software is relatively limited. What they're really doing is kind of the, the annotation piece. This is going to be handled right on the laptop. So a huge, huge difference. When we purchase equipment like this, probably the entire time I've been in this position, we have tried to have a, a lease payment. I don't think the town wants us to call it a lease, but we pay for it over time. It looks a whole lot like a lease, but we use different terminology. In doing that, we also equate the warranty with that lease time. So the product that we have is supported through the entire payment process. We had a glitch where the numbers didn't work out for whatever reason and we wound up with a four-year payment and a three-year warranty. It worked out okay, but we really don't want to be in that position, so we've tried to, to make that case. Philip Patrick, this is the first time we've used them as a vendor. One of the really big differences is that on the Dell laptops, you have a four-year warranty and 90 days on the battery. What HP did for us is they said, whatever your warranty is, we'll support the battery for that amount of time. The amount of money we put in to replacing batteries is significant, so that in and of itself was huge. So this is the first year that we're going to try this. The high school is the one entity that has a single device. All the other schools have a desktop and a laptop. If this works out in practice the way I anticipated doing, what it will mean is if we use this paradigm for the middle school and other schools as we move through the system, there won't be a need for two computers. They'll have a mobile device and that will be the only device, especially if we can work it out so that they are projecting wirelessly. So we're putting together materials to work with faculty to let them know all of the new functionality that they have. This is a Windows 10 system, we've always been Windows 7, so there's going to be a little learning curve for that. But that is, that is significant. So that's being rolled out during this school year. And we're experimenting now with some of these devices because they range anywhere from $20 to $250 to add to existing projector. And we're also looking at projectors that handle everything that a smart board does. So it eliminates the smart board, it simply projects onto a wall and it senses where a, an active pen is and it acts like a smart board. But when you turn it off, now you have your whiteboard back. One of the biggest complaints we got, when everybody wanted a smart board, it covered up part of their whiteboard. And it's like, I didn't want to get rid of that real estate. And now we may have a potential solution that will do both. So these are some of the changes that are, we're testing right now. And I, as I said, could be a potential game changers in terms of how we do teaching and learning in the classroom. For this year's budget, we are looking at a slightly different paradigm. You've been able to support putting Chromebooks in the classrooms. We now are at a point where we have 16 carts in every single school. Each cart has 25 Chromebooks. You heard my colleagues here talk about class size. You didn't see anybody that has 25 students in a classroom. The contractual ceiling, I'll call it, is 25. So all of our carts have the capacity of 30, just in case there was a situation where they did need, need more. We'll be able to, to support doing that. But the paradigm shift is, in all likelihood, there are two to five Chromebooks that aren't being used. So if we change the paradigm from a cart for a classroom to a device for a student, we can very quickly approach that one-to-one threshold with fewer devices. This budget supports looking at the existing devices and adding new devices differently so that each student would have access to a device each day. Part of the logistics, we have to figure out with the principals, but in conversations with them about, you know, would you rather your teachers had a newer device or had more Chromebooks to be able to have students computing wherever, whenever? They unanimously went for Chromebooks. This will support through the middle school, students having access to a device. So we'll have to figure out, how do they get charged in the morning? They're not going home, that's its own liability to have to consider. The jury, in my opinion, is still out on how effectively they're used off-site and we have to filter and we have other things that we would need to do. But the proposed budget from grade one through grade eight would be one device per person and it takes into account next year's numbers based upon the date that we put the budget together. So I haven't revised since then, but it's looking at all of the grades moving forward from this year to next and funding it for one, one-to-one, what I call a hybrid for next year. That also could be a game changer. What I want to emphasize is that these are not intended to be babysitting devices. They're intended to be teaching and learning devices. So part of the PD we need to have is, don't use this as a reward when you're finished with your regular work to do pretty much what you want to do. This needs to be a device that's enhancing the content that you're covering right now. And having access to that device and knowing that the student is going to have access to that is another potential game changer. The Chromebooks were rolled out over the course of several years, but everybody that had access to that kind of device, I don't know of anybody that said that they'd rather just go back to the old, old paradigm. So it was, it was, it took off even faster than I thought, than I might. Thought we're going to have to kind of, you know, do the push-pull routine with some faculty and that wasn't, that wasn't the case, which has made Elizabeth Ferry's life really exciting because they're constantly asking her to come in to see if they can find a new technique to, to do something. And then we're looking at the apps that are available on those devices, really focusing on, if you're asking for something, you need to let us know how it fits with the curriculum. It's not just, oh, it would be really cool to have X, Y, or Z. It needs to be purposeful and people have respected that. So that's a huge part of the budget because it's the, the component where we're really adding a significant amount of money. Not more than we have in the past, but that's kind of the big ticket item for me, that and software. And just in general, my budget supports academic and administrative computing. That means that my budget covers the software that the business office uses. My budget covers the maintenance, school dude software. I basically handle anything that is either district-wide or a district-supported. And then if it's something specific to a building, that comes out of the building-based budget. So you'll see requests at the building level for software. That's because it's not something that's handled across, across all grades. US, what is it called? US movie licensing. We have a license that covers the entire district and that's the license that allows us to show either fragments of a movie or a whole movie legally because teachers have the mindset often that they can go down to Walmart and they can dig through the bin and find a really cool movie that's relevant. The licensing, when they take that out of the bin and move it into the classroom, doesn't exist. The licensing has to be for a public display and all of our work is public display. So it, that license helps us support the vast majority of movies that teachers would show in the classroom. It doesn't do a good job of documentaries. Documentaries are often independent directors and that may not be covered. And so we're really trying to continue to instruct teachers about the fact that just because they can get the actual media, doesn't mean that they have the right to show it in the classroom. So we've had instances where somebody was granted or given a documentary. When we go out to the site, we find that it's not there. And it turned out, in this particular case, they were going to show it to, this is under the previous block system at high school. They were going to show it a total of four times at $300 per event. So $300 didn't cover even the entire day, it just covered displaying that video one time. So we had to decide that it wasn't that big an impact that we were willing to spend $300 per class period to show that content. So they, they covered that content in a different fashion.
Okay, and at this point, I think during the hour, I'd like to ask if there are more questions that we'd like to ask. Mrs. Zeroli, do you have questions?
Yeah, I was letting others, I thought there was another question, the first.
Ms. Chu.
Thank you, Dr. Voitek, for presenting that. Clearly, there's always that learning curve when you bring in new technology to staff or you're finding that the, the amount of time it takes to get them up to speed is narrowing so that you can really enjoy it a little bit sooner.
It, it depends on the device and what learning curve the device has. But for the most part, when something new is coming in, there's been a lot of buzz about it and there's a lot more folks that are ready to take on the challenge. Some, like, I'm trying to think of. Some, like, I'm trying to think of a sample that really didn't fit that bill, but for the most part, people have been really receptive about bringing new technology into the classroom, and then with Elizabeth's support, it's made it far easier, because she's not co-teaching, she's more of a coach, but she works with a teacher until they feel comfortable with the technology so that they can stand in front of 20-odd kids and not be fearful that something's going to go awry.
Excellent. And so I want to give you an opportunity, is there a wish that you had included something else in this budget?
Well, the technology is so unknown, what I would say is that this, this particular budget covers up through the eighth grade, the number of Chromebooks that we would need to include the high school is over 600 additional from this budget, so that's probably part of what you will start up here. That's the only thing that I can see as a clear trajectory that isn't in this budget.
Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Arroli.
I'm going to pass.
Your pass. All right, further questions? All right, hearing none, we thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And you are dismissed. And he's going yes before 10.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
At this point, we have a slot for communication from board members, if any board members want to raise any issues. Hearing none, we go back to our last item, communications from the public, does any member of the public want to speak? All right.
I'm going to sit here and honor this one.
You've been quiet, and if you could tell us your name.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Rock, I have two children in the public school right now, one who is currently in first grade at Roaring Brook. I know a couple of you raised the question about next year's second grade class sizes and looking rather large. My son is currently in a class with 22 kids at Roaring Brook. It looks like, from what I have read on the numbers, that Roaring Brook is planning to still keep five sections, which will be about 21 kids, but Pine Grove was looking to go down, or keep six sections, and reducing the class sizes down to about, I think, 18 or just left, 18 or so. To me, we always, my legal understanding is to try to keep the education equitable in each kind of schools. Having class sizes that disparately different in each school is a concern of mine, three more kids per class is a lot, and especially with the lack of TAs that we have this year, 22 kids in a class is a lot for one teacher, so I just want you to kind of keep that in mind as well going forward.
Thank you for making sure that was brought to our attention, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Further questions? All right, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
I think this time, Mrs. Arroli needs to do it.
Do it, me?
Yes, slightly.
It's okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Carry is unanimously at 9:22, and we are adjourned for the day, the next meeting will be on Wednesday. Thank you all.
Thank you.